Hi all, we're gonna get started in about ten seconds. Everyone could please grab their seats, or A seat. Good evening, welcome to the annual Baltimore City Council's Taxpayers Night. This is a meeting of the Budget and Appropriations Committee. I'm City Councilman Eric Costello and I chair the committee. Let me first introduce the members of the City Council that are with us tonight. I'm pleased to be joined by, to my left, City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. To his left, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. To her left, Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. To his left, Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District. To his left, Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. To his left, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. And to his left, Councilman Ed Risinger from the 10th District. To my right, I'm joined by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. To his right, Councilman Isaac Gitsi Schleifer from the 5th District. To his right, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. To his right, God bless you, to his right, Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District. To her right, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District. And to his right, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District. Taxpayers Night provides the public an opportunity to comment on three City Council bills. City Council Bill 18-0233, the ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending on June 30, 2019. City Council Bill 18-0234, annual property tax for fiscal year 2019. And City Council Bill 18-0240, operating budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. The preliminary fiscal year 2019 operating budget has been recommended at $2.82 billion. This is an increase of approximately $47.9 million above the fiscal year 2018 adopted budget. The capital plan is recommended at $680.9 million, which is a decrease of approximately $437.1 million below the fiscal year 2018 adopted budget. We will start with two very brief presentations by the Finance Department, specifically the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, with our Budget Director, Bob Seneme. And then we will have BCPSS, the Baltimore City Public School System, with their CFO, John Walker. And then we will open up the hearing for public comments. At this time, we're gonna move on to public te-- pardon me, let me take a step back. We're gonna do-- I'll switch up the order here a little bit. So, a little bit about tonight's format. Council members are not gonna be asking questions tonight. What we're here to do tonight is to listen to what your concerns are, what your ideas are, for the proposed budgets. So, we're not gonna be asking questions, other than we may say something like, "I think I heard you say ninety? Did you say ninety? Oh, it was eighty? Okay." Things for clarification, like that. So, we don't intend to enter into dialogue with anyone. With that said, before we begin, I'd like to-- Let's go to the presentations first, and then we'll get a little bit more on the ground rules, and then we'll begin. Mr. Seneme?
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Council. My name is Bob Seneme, City Budget Director, and I'm here to present just a very brief overview of the fiscal 19 budget, more for the benefit of the citizens in attendance today, since the Council heard a longer version of this earlier. This is just five or six slides, just more of a Budget 101.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. This is more of a Budget 101 for our citizens in attendance, just a brief overview of the fiscal 19 budget. So, first off, a little bit about the budget timeline. In the November/December timeframe, internally, the Finance Department works with the Mayor's Office and her staff to gather information from the agencies about what will be in the budget next year. We get proposals from each of our agencies. When we get into January, our office makes funding recommendations to the mayor. The mayor reviews those, decides what she wants to put in her budget that will eventually be passed by the Board and proposed to the Council. In March, we release what we call the preliminary budget. And then in April, the Board of Estimates-- I'm sorry, late April, the Board of Estimates holds their Taxpayers Night. In May, the Board of Estimates votes on the budget. And then this piece of the process is, we've presented the budget to the City Council. The City Council reviews the budget over the course of May and June, and then we'll vote on the budget at the-- sometime in June. So, that's the general timeline. It's actually close to a year-round process, starting back in the fall of the previous year. In terms of the budget itself, the total budget is about $3.4 billion. As you heard in the intro, a bulk of that budget, this year's budget, 82 percent, is the operating budget. The operating budget is the cost to run the city on a day-to-day basis. That's for things like sanitation and policing, traffic management, oversight of city agencies. That's all of the work that goes to run the city. The capital budget, which makes up 18 percent of that total, is for projects of $50,000 or more, and that's to maintain or upgrade our existing city infrastructure. So, that's for things like repaving roads, that's for fixing bridges, conduits, the sewer system, the water utility system. It's the infrastructure that the city has that's maintained. If you break down the operating budget more narrowly, our operating budget this year is proposed at $2.8 billion. And that budget is broken down further by funds, by source of funds. So, the largest fund is what we call the General Fund. That is the city's largest fund. It's largely funded by local taxes, things like property tax, income tax, transfer tax. Policymakers, being the mayor and the City Council, have the most flexibility with how those dollars are spent. Next, we have grant funds. Those are funds that come from other entities, like the federal government, or the state government, or from private entities. Those funds are a little bit more restricted. Usually, they come with some kind of strings attached. And most of our grant funds in the city's budget are in more of our social services or support service agencies, places like health, human services, MOED, and housing, for example. And then finally, we have the blue piece, is what we call enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are like business-like operations as part of the city government. Think of this as the water utility and the wastewater utility, especially where you're being charged a fee for your usage of the system. When we design the budget this year, we build it around what the mayor calls her five pillars. So, we divide all of our services into one of these categories. There's her five pillars are education and youth engagement, public safety, accountability and transparency, economic development and jobs, and quality of life. As you can see here, we try to measure very broadly how well the city's doing in each of those areas by looking at citywide performance measures. For example, academic achievement on the education front, or shootings or property crime on the public safety front. So, we look at those measures and see that we're trying to achieve the goals that we're delivering for our citizens. In this year's particular budget, there was a focus on violence reduction especially. Also, but had a lot of funding in this budget for education and youth, too. So, a couple of key highlights here. There's funding for 100 different additional police officer positions, and we're also expanding the Safe Streets Program, which is a very popular and effective program that we received state funding for, a state grant for, to expand. We're providing, this year, $32.3 million above the required level for city schools. That's to help bridge them through the loss of formula funding. It's part of a three-year, $90 million commitment that the city's made to the schools. There's the second annual contribution to the Children and Youth Fund, which is $12.4 million this year. And outside of public safety and youth, a couple other highlights. We're maintaining most city services. This year was better from a planning perspective. We started in a good spot, and so there is very few or minimal cuts in agency budgets, which means a minimal disruption of city services. We're also starting the first phase of what we call the Digital Transformation Plan. That's MOIT. Our Information Technology Department is looking at how we can better use technology to deliver city services. On the revenue front, two key highlights. We're expanding the speed and red light camera program, so there will be more cameras out there. They're in the process of being rolled out now. So, we expect to bring in more revenue from that program in fiscal 19. And we also are increasing our EMS fees on transports by $1 million. So, that's just a very rough, very high-level overview. I would encourage citizens here to read on our website what we call the Executive Summary Budget Document. And we also have two real thick ones, if you're really interested in getting into the nitty-gritty, which shows service by service and agency by agency, all of the work that the city does, the funding recommendations for next year, and the sources of funds. With that, thank you for having me, and I'll turn it back over to Council for your back. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Walker?
My name's John Walker. I'm the interim Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools. And I'm gonna go quickly through the budget for fiscal year 19 that has been recommended for Baltimore City Public Schools. While we're queuing that up, I'll just go through real quickly. A year ago, we were in a very different situation where we're here, we're facing a potential $130 million budget gap, layoffs, and all sorts of things. And all sorts of things, however, this year, we're kind of in a different place, where this is the first time in several years where we're not actually looking for things to cut. We don't, we're not starting off with a significant budget gap. Just quickly to say that, as a result of some of the things that happened over the winter, we just wanted to point out that part of the 21st Century MOU, we are putting additional dollars into maintenance and into preventive maintenance contracts, $3 million additional each year, over several years until-- And for fiscal year 19, it is recommended to be $14 million additional. We're gonna use the extra $3 million to hire 16 additional building maintenance supervisors, and also to increase the amount of preventive maintenance contracts that we have. This slide just real quickly shows that of our preventive maintenance contracts, over 60 percent of them are used for HVAC preventive maintenance. As far as allocating resources, our General Fund budget is recommended to be $1.156 billion for fiscal year 19. That money comes primarily from the state of Maryland, $849 million for fiscal year 19, and from the city of Baltimore, another $278 million. Of those, of that $1.56 billion, $782 million is directly allocated to schools. The other $374 million is centrally budgeted allocations. That doesn't mean central office, that means it's centrally budgeted, things like transportation. I have a slide I'll show you in a moment. This is how the direct school allocations have come for fiscal year 19. You'll see the flexible funding for traditional schools, $337 million. Locked funds, that's general education and special education locked funds of $207 million. $142 million went to our charter schools. Another unlocked SWD, or Students with Disabilities, dollars of $79 million. We also allocated $13.7 million to our Alternative Option Program schools, and another $3 million was dedicated to targeted funding, for a total of $782 million that went directly to schools and school budgets. This is a model update on the tradition. I won't go through this too much. This is the traditional school model, and what we did in fiscal year 19 is we're trying to put more of our dollars into our low-income students, and try to put them more into our pockets of concentrated poverty. So, we changed our model in order to try to direct more resources that way. As a result, there were some schools that lost and some schools that won. The decision was made for fiscal year 19 that we would not allow any school to lose dollars as a result of the model. Some schools may have lost dollars because of enrollment declines or some other things, but no school lost dollars as a result of the change in the model in fiscal year 19. I'll come back to that last. This is how we did the General Fund budget distribution. You see that 68 percent of our budget goes directly to schools. Another 14 percent is budgeted centrally on behalf of schools. And you'll see that approximately 7 percent of our General Fund budget is used for central administration. This is the centrally budgeted piece for schools, that 14 percent. You'll see that that's transportation, utilities, non-public placements and out-of-county living arrangements that we're required to do for our students. We have certain academic contracts and operating contracts that are budgeted centrally for the schools. School police is another 4 percent, and that's how that's broken down. And now, I'll go back to the charter school formula update. And in fiscal year 19, we're recommending a proposed $9,017 per student for charter schools. That is a decrease from fiscal year 18. And I know a lot of people know about the $5.5 million, and what it was, and where it came from. And we just wanted to explain a little bit that the $5.5 million was primarily for things. Number one is, there was an error made in fiscal year 18, in which charter schools got more funding than they were supposed to have gotten, as the formula would have given them. That amounted to about $3.8 million in allocation that was taken back in 19. The decision was made in fiscal year 18, when the error was discovered, that in order to not disrupt programming in charter schools, we would not take back the overpayments that were made to charter schools. We would allow them to keep it for 18. But in November of 2017, we both held meetings with charter schools, and a letter was sent from the CEO to each of the charter school operators to explain to them that this error came. We are not gonna take back any additional dollars in fiscal year 18. However, please prepare for fiscal year 19, because we will have to make the correction for fiscal year 19. So, the $5.5 million, that's $3.8 million of that $5.5 million is the correction of that error. Another thing that was done is the administrative fee was moved to a different place in the formula. And that was done because the 2 percent administrative fee that we are allowed to do by state law does not fully cover our costs, and we had-- We did an analysis, and we found that it was taken out too low in the formula, and we moved it up to get a benefit of getting those administrative costs more in line with what they actually are. There was also, a part of the $5.5 million, there was a decrease in charter school enrollment in fiscal year 19 over fiscal year 18, and that amounted to about $600,000. The last-- The 2 percent amounted to about $1.5 million, and there was another $400,000 credit that went the other way, as a result of changes that happened in the exclusions in the formula from fiscal year 18 to 19. That's what made up the $5.5 million. If you get to-- The other thing that is being recommended for fiscal year 19 is that certain nondistributable fringe benefits that had been handled centrally, and the central office would pay for them for all schools, that charter schools will now pay their proportionate share of sick leave conversion, which is actually a salary piece that district employees, similar to city employees, are allowed to cash in a certain number of their sick leave days at the end of the year, if they don't use them for cash. The charter schools have never been billed for those in the past, and fiscal year 19 will be the first time we will be making that charge. Also, tuition reimbursement. Charter schools will begin to pay their proportionate share of tuition reimbursement for those staff that get tuition reimbursement in charter schools. And the last part is along to long-term substitutes that in the past had been handled centrally, and charter schools will now pay for long-term substitutes that they have for in their particular schools. That in itself, that will amount to approximately $1.8 million for charter schools in fiscal year 19. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So, we're gonna get ready to move on to public testimony. As I mentioned before, members of the City Council are very interested in listening to your views and observations concerning the budget. Since we're here to listen, we do not intend to enter into dialogue with you as you speak, but may ask you to clarify a point. Anyone wishing to speak tonight must have signed up on one of the sign-in sheets out in the hallway. Is there anyone in the room who has not signed in? Okay. Speakers will be heard in the order in which they have signed up. Each time I announce the name of a speaker, I will also name the person who is next after that speaker, so that they're prepared to come up. We're gonna ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes per person, so that everyone here tonight can have an opportunity to speak. Time is gonna be kept by Matt here on the screen up there. Please, as your time is winding down, prepare to wind down your remarks. No one is gonna be permitted to yield their time to another presenter. As stated previously, all individuals will be permitted to testify only once. If you have points you wish to raise that cannot be addressed in the allotted two-minute time period, you may submit written testimony to committee staff at the hearing, which is Marguerite sitting to my right. If you have a handout or a copy of your remarks in writing, please give them to Marguerite Curran, staff for the committee, who is sitting to my immediate right. She will distribute them to the council members. I also wanted to recognize Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District. On the back, to my immediate right, Marguerite Curran, who is staff to the committee. Kara Kuntz, who is the Legislative Director for Council President Young. And I think that's it in terms of senior staff. And Rebecca Tab, who is counsel to the City Council. David Simpson, who is our fiscal analyst. And Matt Peters, who's helping out staffing today. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Council President Jack Young for a few brief remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is your opportunity, as the city residents, to share your thoughts regarding the city's spending, budget priorities, and other fiscal concerns. I want to thank Councilman Costello for working with my office to ensure that the City Council is responsive to our constituents' concerns about the budget. I also want to thank the citizens that have taken the time to come to City Hall this evening to share their thoughts on the city's fiscal year 2019 budget. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for your staff's support throughout this process. I'd also like to take an opportunity to give Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, an opportunity to make remarks.
Thank you, Chairman Costello. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank those who've taken the time to come down this evening to Taxpayers Night. This type of dialogue and discourse is essential to government, that it's both responsive and effective. And as a member of the Budget Committee, I consider your input this evening as a critical component to assure that we have a budget that works for all residents. So, I want to thank you again for your continued commitment to our city.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, I would be remiss if I did not recognize one of our colleagues, who is no longer with us, is daughter, Nicole Harris-Cress. Just want to welcome you to City Hall. I know it's been a long, long time since you've been in here, but I want to let you know that we really appreciate your father's services to the city of Baltimore, and just wanted to welcome you. Not that nobody else is important here, but her dad served in this body, and served so ably in this body. So, I had to recognize her, and let her know that we still think about you and your family, and you're always welcome to come to City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. And with that, we are going to begin, and first up is Nicole Harris-Cress, first on the list. And folks, for those of you who are testifying, you can move that mic up and down. Please try and keep it a couple inches away from you, but speak clearly into it, because this is being televised, it's being streamed on the Internet and televised on Channel 25, just so folks at home can hear what you're saying.
Okay. Well, thank you, Council President Young, Chairman Costello, and other members of the Council. I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Alliance of Public Charter Schools. We're a statewide coalition of charter schools, which promotes efforts to maintain high-quality charter school options for students statewide. Our focus of our work is largely in Baltimore, where the majority of charter schools are located. There are 34 in Baltimore City, and where unfortunately, charters face some of the most severe challenges in the sector. Notwithstanding the hurdles that we face as Baltimore City charter schools, the Alliance is confident that with a proper assessment of the challenges and critical consideration of the potential solutions, that charters can work with city schools to develop a renewed partnership and improved environment where charters can flourish. Unfortunately, our hope for partnership and the financial stability of the charter sector is being challenged by the funding cuts that city schools recently proposed and approved just last Tuesday. As you have already heard, charters face a $7.3 million cut from last year's spending, and of that cut, $1.8 million of that, as you've already heard, are mandatory fees. And those fees are for sick leave conversion, tuition reimbursement, and long-term substitutes. What hasn't been shared today is that there are also fees that were charged and will be charged in fiscal year 19 for mandatory police fees, and that amounts to $125 additional per people that charter schools will be faced with in fiscal year 19. Contrary to the district's statements earlier, these fees are not in accordance with Maryland law. Charter schools are only supposed to be charged a 2 percent administrative service fee in accordance with Maryland law. And so, adding the 2 percent administrative service fee on top-- Adding these fees on top of that administrative service fee is contrary to the law, and it's over our objections. And so, each year, charters have faced a new wave of challenges and charges from the district, and it further chips away at our funding. And it's not possible for charter schools to continue to operate without predictability and consistency. And so, it's harming the viability of our schools, it's harming our ability to offer the innovative services that we would say we would offer kids, and it's ultimately harming the city of Baltimore, as many of our schools have long waiting lists, we're keeping families in Baltimore City, and we would ask that you would take into consideration our recommendation to vote against the proposed budget as given by city schools. Thank you.
Thank you. There's one other thing that I forgot to mention during introductory remarks, and it's regarding the process by which the budget is formulated. So, we're dealing with two budgets here, one for the city and one for the school system. On the city side, and this mistake is often made, this is not the City Council's budget. This is the mayor's budget. It's created by the Board of Estimates, which is a board of five individuals, three of which were city-elected officials, the mayor, the council president, and the comptroller. And then, two other individuals who are at-will employees of the mayor, the director of the Department of Public Works, and the city solicitor. So, the Board of Estimates is controlled by the mayor. I'm not opining as to whether that's good or bad, I'm just stating what the facts are. So, the budget, for all intents and purposes, for the city, that we get in front of the council to consider, is the budget that is determined by the mayor. We have basically two options, what we can do with that budget. We can either approve that budget, or we can approve a budget with cuts to it. So, if we decide we wanted to cut $100 from trash collection, we could cut $100 from trash collection. What we can't do, per the city charter, is take that $100 from trash collection and put it into the operation of swimming pools. So, we can make cuts, we can make targeted cuts, but we cannot dictate where that money goes to. Now, where that money can go to is two places. One, it can go to a property tax reduction in that year. Or, two, it can go into fund balance for the following year. That's the city budget. As for the school budget, school budget is-- First off, there are contributions to the school system's budget that come from the federal government, from the state government, and the city government. And federal and state, there are a whole bunch of different formulas that determine how much money is appropriated to the school system. Then the city has something called maintenance of effort. It's what we're legally required to provide to the school system. This year, it's 270-- Approximately $278 million. Once the school system knows how much money they have, the school system CEO, not the board, but the CEO, and her team, that's who Mr. Walker works for, is the CFO, they put together a budget. And that budget is what was voted on last Tuesday by the school board. It's voted on by the Board of School Commissioners. So, that's the CEO's budget. So, I want to be clear, when we're talking about the city budget, we're talking about the mayor's budget, which is something that the council will eventually vote on during the budget hearing process. And then, the school system budget is the school CEO's budget, which has been voted on and approved by the school system. Our role is to determine whether or not we will give the school system the money, the $278 million in MOE. With that, next up is Sherrell Savage, I hope I said that right, followed by Christina
Thank you. Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Sherrell Savage. I am a proud parent of three sons who attend public charter schools in Baltimore City, a 10th grader, 7th grader, and 4th grader. All of my children, either at one time or currently, attend the KIPP Baltimore Public Charter School. Two of them have been KIPPsters since kindergarten. When I was looking at my choices for my children's education, I chose charter schools because I was looking for an educational setting where my children could grow and thrive. I was looking for an educational setting that was creative, had the structure that my children required, and would provide them with rigorous academic content to ensure that they would receive the education they needed to be prepared for a college or career of their choosing. I found this type of education at the KIPP Baltimore Charter School. My oldest son, who attended KIPP for middle school, had learning challenges and received support at KIPP Ujima through its special education programming, helping him to be ready to transition to high school. Our KIPP Through College team is amazing with the support it provides to our KIPP alumni as they climb the mountain to and through college or career. The school leadership at each of our KIPP schools thrives to build strong relationships with families. Teachers know our students' strengths, as well as where they need to be challenged in order to grow. I'm confident, due to their I'm confident, due to their strong emphasis on academics and creating a culture where all students understand and embrace their value as members of a great community, that my sons will be successful citizens. They are KIPPsters for life, and myself, along with the families of over our 1,500 students, believe in the mission and vision of KIPP. The budget, however, that has been proposed by city schools, if it is passed by this council, will cut off at the knees the very things our school and other charter schools are trying to create for our students. This is not the first time our school and other schools represented here tonight have had to absorb cuts proposed by the district. I would just like to ask, in closing, that I want to understand how these changes will benefit the students of our city and also help our city. I'm requesting that members of the City Council not approve the BCPS budget as it is proposed, and that you would ask that they go back and review their budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Flowers? Which will be followed by Ms. Bazemore.
Good evening, all councilmen and women. I am Christina Flowers, proud owner and operator of an emergency supportive housing first program in Baltimore City. When I look at homeless services budget, I would like to ask for consideration of our councilmen and women to look at a $40 million-plus budget that is not hitting the issues of street homeless individuals. When you look at permanent housing, supportive housing, it is not addressing the concerns of our brothers and sisters that are residing under the bridges and vacant houses and in other areas in the city of Baltimore. I'm not one to ask about just any money, I would like us to get some focused money into homeless services, so that we could address these issues of our over 500 street homeless individuals. I would love the opportunity to continue this conversation in different areas with a lot of you guys, so that we can move forward in changing the status of our homeless situations. We have over 132 service providers in this city, and none of them addresses the issues of emergency housing and circumstances and situations when people are on the streets and just need to have an emergency solution. So, not just any type of money should be focused into homeless services, we should focus on the money and make sure it is giving us solutions and results to our street homeless individuals in all districts, not just downtown Baltimore. We have a great concern of our homeless individuals, who is not getting the access nor the services that this $40 million-plus budget has been out there to get. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Bazemore, followed by Mr. Charles Kramer. Ms. Bazemore, from East Baltimore.
Good evening, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, as you may know, if any of you follow social media, I am the producer and host of a talk show called Behind the Scenes, and I interviewed your President Jack Young a couple of Mondays ago, and we spoke about briefly about the situation, the epidemic of homelessness here in your city. And as I went throughout the city and began to investigate and look at an interview and hear the voices of some homeless people actually on your streets of Baltimore, what kind of really puzzled and really concerned me was that I don't see an actual workable plan to really end homelessness in Baltimore City. What I'm actually seeing is there's tens of millions of dollars that flow in from the federal government level, such as HUD, to the Department of Housing here in the state of Maryland, and it trickles down to the city's budget, where you have tens of millions, and if I'm not mistaken, this year, about $50 million that went into the war chest to end homelessness here in Baltimore City. But yet, you guys are still dealing with a broad epidemic of homelessness. I actually went to the ACLU Lawyers Committee on Civil Rights two Wednesdays ago in Washington, DC, and as I spoke to Eric Zimmerman, who actually was a very vital civil rights attorney, but as well as advisor to HUD for many years, and we asked that question, and I had saw two other individuals there from Baltimore, Maryland, that asked some of the same questions, when is some of that money in your war chest gonna be trickled down on the ground, where it's actually being put out there on the streets of Baltimore, to small and medium-sized grassroots organizations, who actually I've been interviewing over the past year, that actually, on a daily basis, house your homeless here in Baltimore City? So, I would first like to ask Jack Young one question.
Ms. Bazemore, I have to ask you to wrap up your 30 seconds.
I'm gonna wrap up my 30, I didn't realize I only had 30 seconds, but I think that those questions need to be answered at just looking at your budget, because when you allocate a certain amount of money to go toward a particular goal, initiative, such as ending homelessness, Baltimore, if you're able to actually get that done over the next 10 years, and I think you can, because Washington, DC, where I'm from, has done a major thing of doing that. So, I'm gonna end it up by just saying this.
Bazemore, you're a minute past your time.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna end it up by saying, really taking consideration of working with your small and medium-sized grassroots, getting together and building a plan and work the plan, and thank you for your service, Ms. Mary Clark.
Thank you. Mr. Charles Kramer, followed by Anthony Duncan.
Good evening, my name's Chad Kramer, I'm the principal of Patterson Park Public Charter School, also a longtime resident, currently at Broadway Overlook in 12th District. Also, my daughters with me, Charlotte and Maura, over there, minecraing it up over there. Bring them up, because not only am I talking about something that affects me professionally, it affects me personally. Both of my daughters go to Patterson Park Public Charter School. I'm here to share with you the fact that the budget that's presented to you by city schools is going to do damage to my community. And you're gonna hear compelling cases about charter schools, and I think we have to acknowledge that this is a double whammy that we're dealing with, reduced funding, but then increased fees. One part that I've talked to Councilman Cohen about several times, that I would like to highlight with my moments here, is that we are also undercounting our immigrant population in a manner that we must reverse. We, at city schools, have been wrestling with how to count families who don't receive other federal services, in order to adequately fund schools, in order to be able to distribute those funds. We don't have a solution, and unfortunately, what that's meant is that schools are not getting the resources. And that is something that needs to stop. Not only does it affect Patterson Park Public Charter School to a tune of about $350,000, we're gonna have to deal with cuts to staff, we're gonna have to deal with cuts to program that affect my family, as well as families who are deeply in need. Now, I want us to consider the fact that in Baltimore City, we want to grow our city here. And if we know of two populations of people that are just intrinsic to that growth, it is our families who are seeking educational choices, and it's also our families who are recent immigrants here. And what we have in front of us is a budget that disregards the needs of both of them. And I believe we can do better, and we should do better, because if we know something about both of those sets of families, it's that they move. Charter families, if they don't get the opportunity to go to a school of choice, we know, decide to move. They go other places, and our city can't endure that any longer. We also know, just by the simple fact that we have immigrants in our community, that immigrants move. They do. They show the grit, the resilience, to find places where they're better served. I believe that place can be Baltimore City. I need your support in order to make that happen at Patterson Park. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Anthony Duncan, followed by Kim Truheart.
Greetings, councilmembers. Thank you all for having us this evening. I'll be short. My name's Anthony Duncan, I am a Washingtonian. I echo the sentiments of my fellow citizens who came before me. Half, half the property tax rate. It sounds bold, but it is a game changer. We've seen it in Boston, we've seen it in San Francisco, we've seen it in Washington, DC. I posted this question, and my councilmember Costello was really great to respond. He said, "We would need to, if we have the property tax rate, we would need to cut $450 million from the operating budget." With all due respect, I think that what Councilmember Costello was referring to is a static rather than dynamic analysis, right? The tax base is not a fixed base. It can change a great deal, surprisingly quickly, in response to changes in tax rates, right? We're losing people in this city. We're losing great people. I'm an attorney in Washington, DC. My wife and I decided to move here because the houses are beautiful, but we could've stayed in DC, right? Where it's a little safer, we're not walking by vacates, we're not living in food deserts. Most people are leaving the city because of that reason. They're leaving the city because education choices are poor. If we have the tax rate, we can set it for three years after the assessment, doesn't have to be done today. We can set it, have the tax rate, encourage developers to come into the city, to neighborhoods outside of the inner harbor, that are neighborhoods that we all enjoy, your districts, put commercial development there. I grew up in Columbia Heights, where it was the worst area in DC in the 80s and 90s. It was the murder capital of the world, right? We anchored our neighborhood, we anchored institutions, we're buildings, with economic development, and I was able to go to law school right in that city, because my parents were able to then lease out some of their units, right? It gives economic opportunities to the families that live here. But we can't do that if we're penalizing homeowners. We need to encourage to move from the county to the city. By 2050, 2/3 of the world's population will live in urban areas. Every other city in America's enjoying this influx, but Baltimore. We're not taking advantage of our capital. Our capital are beautiful, big homes, right here between DC, Philly, and New York. We're sitting on prime real estate, but we're not taking advantage of it, because we're overcharging. We're not thinking boldly. We need to move outside of just the inner harbor and take advantage of these beautiful neighborhoods. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Ms. Truheart, followed by Ms. Adamson?
Good evening. The budget as it is proposed is inadequate in numerous ways, and each and every one of you knows that. But yet, you're gonna vote to approve it. Well, let me tell you why you shouldn't, okay? This budget does nothing to advance adding community schools, and we know community schools work. We know our children get the extra care, feeding, right? Support through community schools that they don't get in our regular school eight-hour day, okay? But yet, you've done nothing to advance that. As you've heard, the homeless population in this city is growing. This budget does very little, even though there has been a promise to build 200 units in the city of affordable housing for homeless. I haven't seen that plan, I've just heard the rhetoric around it, okay? One of the more important things that we need to recognize is our children need help. Now, how do we help them? And in my opinion, that's through the parents. We've attempted to substitute for the parent in every aspect of life, and you cannot substitute for the parent, okay? When there is a parent, let's invest in them, let's show them how to be the first teacher for their child. Let's show them how to raise this child, that people are pointing at as being a problem. But yet, you've not done anything in this budget to help parents do their job. Now, the budget hearings are coming up shortly. Now, I'm expecting the issues that I've raised to come up at the budget hearings for each agency in this city. I testified at the mayor's Board of Estimates Taxpayer Night, and I asked that all the questions being asked be posted and answered. I'm gonna ask that same question again tonight. Every person who came before you tonight deserves an answer, and if you haven't already provided it, do so immediately after this meeting. That's your job. Communicate with us, because you're doing a horrible job of it.
Next up, Ms. Adamson. Ms. Adamson, before you go, or go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Natalia Adamson, I'm the principal at KIPP Baltimore. I've been a principal since we opened our elementary school in 2009. I am here to ask that we do not approve a budget that further cuts charter school funding. Over the last three years, we have cut $1.1 million from our budget, and just so you understand what that means for our children, it has meant increased class sizes, that's the equivalent of almost 11 staff members. It's meant that our science instruction was 225 minutes a week, and it's now down to 90 minutes a week. It has meant that our students were able to take Spanish from kindergarten through 8th grade, and now they start in 7th grade. It has also meant that we offered Algebra I to our students in 8th grade, and we can no longer do that. It's also meant that our longer school day has decreased by one hour, which has meant that our writing instruction has decreased by 30 minutes a day, an essential skill for our kids. So, we're asking that the further cuts in charter school funding that we were unable to predict and prepare for, not take more things from my children. That means $400,000 more dollars next year, which is four people or another hour of instruction. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to testify, by a show of hands? Thank you all for coming out. As we discussed, we'll have the budget hearings next week, and you're welcome to, or in two weeks, and you're welcome to submit written testimony to the committee, or reach out to individual council members, or the council president's office to discuss your concerns. We are now adjourned, please check under your seats and make sure, recessed, please check under your seats and make sure you take everything that you brought with you. Thank you.